Welcome everyone to a joint work session. Of the school board and the assembly. It's been. How long since we got together?
Just a year.
Year, just a year.
One or two.
I'm trying to picture the location and the food, but I can't.
It was definitely on Zoom. I love that. It just seems like yesterday.
It is good to get together.
Yes.
I'm looking forward to it. Thanks for everybody. Thanks, everybody online for joining us as well. Um, thanks Superintendent Folka for putting together an agenda for tonight's meeting.
So it was done with Mayor Noel as well, right? Unfortunately, he's not able to be here. And I didn't even see us.
Yeah, lots of things on our mind. I'm certainly looking forward to hearing. I know different folks have been to Juneau the last couple of weeks. Just kind of getting a report back from. From some of that and what work we have to do. And yeah, it looks like a good agenda. Do a call to order. And then we'll do introductions. Oh, call to call us to order Superintendent Folka. Would you lead us in the fudgable events?
Sure.
No real call for tonight's meeting.
Introductions.
Yeah.
I'll start.
Thanks.
Don Adams.
Hi, Don. Good evening, Don.
Denali. School District Board President, and we are missing a couple of our members today, Jenna and Forrest. Make it this evening.
Kristen Randall.
Evening, Kristen.
Good evening. School Board Number 30, well, we're through my eighth year being on the board.
Daniel Lind.
I'm the school board.
Uh, Jeremy Stanton.
Hi, Jeremy.
Jared Zimmerman.
Hi, Jared.
Been on the Assembly for 10 years or so. And I have kids in the school.
Warren Burns.
Krista Spoh, Denali Borough Assembly, just shy of Jared's tenure, which is actually closer to 11.
Hi, Krista. Happy to be here. Thank you.
Katie Creamy, second year, second year on the school board.
Mark Warner, Borough Assembly. I haven't been around that long.
Lisa Paul.
Evening, everybody. Dan Folta Superintendent, 10th year as Superintendent, 18th year total. The district, I'd like to remind people, sometimes moved here in 1995, left for a while, came back.
Online, Mr. Alexander.
Good evening, Davis.
Let me guess, he's on the Assembly.
Hey, Mr. Hammond. You're freezing now.
Ask them, I can look at Ask them.
Is it working now? No? Yeah. Perfect. Rich Hammond currently on the Denali Borough Assembly. I probably know a lot of you folks. I have two kids in the school district and I. Probably lost track of how many things I've done around the borough. So. But haven't met you. I probably will soon. So that's me.
Any luck, Mr. Alexander? Just to do a mic check?
Hit the spacebar.
Shoot us a chat or give us a call on the phone if you want to. If you want to chime in. We'll get there. First, uh, next item up on the agenda is the budget and fiscal outlook discussion.
Yeah, really opportunity just to kind of allow the bodies to speak. That informally with each other about kind of financial projections. This could tie into some of those conversations that you're one of. You know, the school board did approve their FY26 budget in our February meeting. And so we're kind of in the process of getting all the documents over to the Borough for you to formally consider local contribution. At this point, our budget on whole is a little bit over $12 million. And the local contribution is a little bit under $3 million. So it is an increase of about. I remember right, $150,000 from this past year related to both an increase in a required contribution. Tagged to property values in the borough and then also. Our assumptions on our estate A B, a little bit larger increases the. Optional amount to for the 23%. And as drafted right now, that budget still has about a $380,000 deficit, which is comfortable, manageable with the reserves that we have. We've also been able to confirm a strategy to take the. Reserves, the unrestricted carryover that we'll have at the end of this year and use those for some prepaid expenses. In the next year and shrink the unrestricted carryover down so that we don't hit the statutory limit. Of 10% and still preserve those funds, help us offset things like that, projected deficit. And again, that assumes an increase to the base student allocation, which is not statute. And then. I don't know if we have borough staff would chime in on just kind of like the position that the borough feels that it's in. Relative to the funds that you have, but I know talking to Chris, who would say in the urgent meetings. That the tax revenues look to be healthy and robust for the year as well. And I was.
I think even even given the Riley fire. Revenue, you know, from the last fiscal year. Coming in over coming in over projections and. Yeah, healthy position. And then you kind of have a new taxes when we were going into the COVID. Into the COVID years and stuff like that. So I guess those revenues are kind of steadying out. We've got a little better picture of what that is. Increased of that tax a half percent. We have the alcohol marijuana tax that's. Generating pretty significant revenue as well. So. Certainly, I think from the Assembly side, I feel like we're in a healthy. Fiscal position, certainly, you know. Coming out of the coming out of the pandemic and with all of our new revenue coming back in, I feel like we're in a pretty good spot. In a better position to fully fund our our local contribution than we have been in a in a while. So that feels good. And I don't know whether folks on the Assembly have other perspectives on on that. And we just got a good financial snapshot at our last Assembly meeting and things, things are looking really good for the boroughs. And potentially even better this year. But last revenues from last year were up beyond what they were projected to be. So things are looking good.
When do we get to look at FY26 budget?
Starts in.
Budget amendment. Yeah, budget amendment, I think. We'll probably be at our next meeting and then we'll look at it. Has to be done by June.
Um, I just want to say, I know a lot of you folks know this or whatever, but. The Denali Borough has a long history of allotting the full allowable amount. I don't think we've had any turnover that I could say would suggest that that would not be. Kind of a trend going forward. So. Honestly, if it was up to me and we could give you more, we probably would.
That's something that's while we're in Juneau, quite a number of legislators are talking about raising the ceiling of. We are allowed to contribute. I didn't actually see that written in any drafts, but a lot of people are talking about it. That might be something that happens in the future.
That would be interesting if they. Were to do that in this through a statutory change because some of it's tied to like this federal provision. Which many school districts actually don't like. Because the cap is based to by federal law to try to kind of equalize. Funding across like a state to go like, hey, you should be funding education about the same everywhere. So don't kind of overfund somebody and have some. And the kind of control mechanism for that is this calculation and the federal government says state, if you meet that. You can use the federal impact aid that's provided to school districts for like, you know, property taxes. States, if you meet this requirement, you can take that. And so some school districts are kind of like, would you do maybe? Because it's a significant amount of money for us. It's. It's less than $10,000 a year. It's really negligible. But for some districts, it's like they actually want the state not to take that money because of an increase or revenue. But the code, there'd be a total cost shift to the state. Because they use that like in lieu of they reduce their local, the local contribution because they take that federal. So if there's a change in state law, I know many superintendents would go. Because then we not meet that quote, that calculation and the state could not take that federal impacted.
Okay. Wonder if that's why none of the state guys have drafted that. It was mentioned a lot.
Okay, and I'm thrilled, excited to hear it because last year the department was actually working on. Regulations which would kind of capture and count more things that boroughs do as being part of the local contribution. That there are several school districts that fund community programs and different things that that happen at schools. Next to or outside of that 23% limitation and the regulations that are being talked about, you kind of. Put all those in that 23% calculation and. Technically, and again, looking at how it works, it then prevents the. The borough from the boroughs from providing that those support. So again, there are several superintendents I know that don't want regulations like that because those. Monies from their communities support a lot of programs. And sometimes it's like after school things, evening things, things not directly connected to like the key 12 mission.
I was just wondering, Dan, if you could maybe provide an update on the student allotment and. Is there? Are they changing that or? Think I thought I read somewhere that they had approved the one time increase again. What does that say?
The the BSA, the base student allocation. You know, it's, it's, it's all part of conversation right now, negotiations. So the current year that we're on is a one time funding. And we budgeted on saying that same level continues, right? But the negotiations in Juneau right now are between. A proposal that would significantly increase the base student allocation. And adjusted annually for inflation. So we won't get into this position where we've been so static so long. And then that's kind of one, one aspect of the negotiation. Another aspect of negotiations are a series of proposals put forth by the governor. Not about increasing that base student allocation at all, but a lot of like different. Different aspects of policy change. Possibly changing how charter schools are approved in the state. Funding language on open enrollment within school districts and between school districts. And then some changes to kind of. Little little tweaks to the funding formula, a little bit of extra money provided kind of focus for career technical education. Some adjustments to the funding calculations for correspondence programs, increases to transportation funding. And I think a few other aspects, there was a lot of kind of like little pieces of that law. And right now representatives from the governor's office and the. Legislative bodies are meeting and trying to. Figure that out. And it's been going on for starting to trying to think they've been talking for three weeks. Initially, it said they were just trying to talk for like two. So it's taken longer, but they're still talking, which is good. And keep kind of hearing that there's a lot of agreement on many of the points. I haven't heard numbers in any way. But still some, some differences on even just like one or two, like last, last remaining points. Okay, thank you.
On the state side, while we're down there, the lot of people talked, this was probably the number one issue that was that was talked about. It's the BSA increase and. The. Seems like there's, there's three camps. We got the governor's camp. We've got. The camp where we just need an increase across the board. And then there's kind of a mixture of the two, which is probably what's been happening. But you know, the, the. Reminder kept coming out like, hey, guys, if we run the same budget as we did last year with, with, you know, across the state for everything. We're, we're, we're running like a $300 million deficit with no, with no change at all. I think it's $330 million. And so whatever increases, you know, towards the BSA or whatever, like we either add to that deficit or we cut something else. You know, anything we would do to add revenue would take a long time. So. It's not, it's not, there's, there's nobody on Capitol Hill that was like, hey, we don't want to. Give any more money to schools. Nobody was in that camp at all. The debate is how much can we? Fund the BSA. While keeping other programs that everybody wants to keep without growing deficit to be. In a really bad place. So there's nobody who's really fighting against it. It's just everybody's trying to find common ground on. How much and where it's going to go.
Well, we do appreciate the borough's continued. Support of Denali Borough School District. So you started that and you know, we, you are still one of the few boroughs. That do the max and most boroughs don't do that anymore. And we are very fortunate here. To have a borough that partners with us in education of the students here. This is our borough. We do appreciate that.
Speaking to that, I mean, on top of the thanks and our small schools exist still because our borough benefits are max. And that's. Really so. So thank you guys. Very, very much.
I was just going to point out the carryover. Everyone understands the carryover that Dan spoke about it. It, it, it was capped for a long time during, it wasn't capped. And then now it's going to be capped again to 10%. So we're limited to the amount of money that we can carry over to the next year. Which is why we had funds this year in order to give teacher bonuses in December, or all staff, sorry, all staff bonuses. Why we're replacing some of the vehicles these, you know, with one time. Expenses to try to improve our situation. Then as Dan spoke about where, you know, if we can prepay some of our things in June. To set us up better in July because there's more unknowns in July that 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 could go well. Since there are a lot more unknowns, maybe in the next three, six months.
Yeah, in some ways like the provision is good because like the monies received are based on kind of enrollments in a year. So it's like, well, you should probably use that to. Educate the children this year. That's kind of the, the funding design of schools. But then also strange in that. When you know there's financial uncertainty, like wonders about like, well, what's moving forward with state level funding? You can't in, in, in some way like they kind of limit your ability to just prepare. Like if personally, if you're like, oh. You know, I might lose my job in a couple of months. Maybe I should start saving a lot of money for that. It's like. This design doesn't allow a district to do that. It doesn't say, hey. Build up to, to carry over cushion like this uncertainty that if we had. Increase to the BSA, if it was inflation proofed or like a multi-year stagger. You'd sit there and go like, hey, I don't see a need for. Like this, this larger carryover because I can project out. Financial plans a lot of them. And you can kind of recognize that you've got the. Income to deal with. With the aspects that are going to come instead of going. I wonder if I'm going to need those reserves.
Well, I think that's something that I appreciated about the district is I've. Been here there for a while and been on the finance committee the whole time, you know, is, is the fiscal responsibility. That we have had, you know, we're not in the same financial situation as most of the boroughs, most of the school districts within the state. You know, like they're, they're crying millions and millions of dollars. You know, they're having to shut down all these schools and. And over the course of the time I've been in there, I, you know, we've been, we've been frugal. We've been smart. You know, trying to allocate the resources where we need to, holding back when we needed to, you know, like through some of those COVID years, you know, like. Just trying to be really smart and intentional with how we spend the money that. Not only the borough gives us, but the state gives us so that we have put ourselves in a very fortunate situation that. You know, we haven't had to have a lot of those same conversations that other states have, you know, where it's, you know. Getting, you know, laying off or reducing their staff by a huge amount of money. I mean, a huge amount, you know, like. And closing buildings or consolidating. And I think because of wise fiscal management of those funds. You know, we've been able to provide the same quality education that we expect to have.
That's something maybe I should have said first too is, is our school district is noticed by the state. We, we met with a, a few different representatives, Mayor Noel met with more than I was there for, but. Representative McCabe specifically mentioned what you just said. He, he just said, I, I, how much he appreciated the transparency. And just the completeness of everything that our school district provides. Thanks to. You and the, and the school board. You know, he was comparing like our, the vehicle purchases to some other. Money is outlaid by another school district. And he said, you know, like, like, we don't want to give them money because we have no idea where it's going. Whereas. Our school districts, like it's so transparent. Everything's out in the open. Nobody has to wonder where it's going. And, you know, from, from a. Funding perspective, it certainly makes anybody who's trying to get money for the school district a lot happier to. Do it for sure because you guys do a good job. It's noticed too.
This annual dance with the BSA and the budget. The way it's always been, or is this kind of unique to us?
It's not. And being the old. It's not how it's always. It's how it's been for many years. So in the 10 years I've been superintendent. I think that year I came in or the year after, there was a couple of little shifts in funding. That happened, not anything significant. I can't even remember if it changed the BSA or if it was a shift in someone like the correspondence fund. So I remember there was a bump up in, in one of those years. There was a $30 increase recently in the BSA that was tied part of the Alaska REEDS Act. 0.5% increase. It was like, I think it actually was the first BSA increase in like 11. So in recent history, it's, it's been like this. Exacerbated in the last three or four years because of. Few factors during the COVID pandemic, there is so much federal money that kind of flew into systems. To keep everything working and to help systems respond to that, that there is this extra money. And that was a period of time of extra federal. And there was this period of exacerbated inflation that we experienced. So these last couple of years. That kind of purchasing power gap that developed. Just shot up. And so like the, the dance wasn't as critical. And the first several years I was superintendent, every time we went down to Juneau, we never, we didn't talk about it. Yes, hey, we talked to it. You guys need a fiscal plan. Like let's support a multi-pronged fiscal plan. And so you guys got it. You guys got to get this grand. Plan together or else we're going to be in that situation down the road where. There's no room for anything. And a few years ago, we shifted the message to. Oh, you're like, you didn't listen then. And now this gap's so desperate. That we're just going to talk to you about the BSA part. And so it's, it's got much, much worse. But in the before times, like in the 90s, early 2000s. The BSA would be increased every couple of years. Where there'd be a statute where it's like, hey, in the next five years, it's going to be this and two years later, this, and then a couple of years later, this. So you had planning.
Yeah, it just seems like all the planning is gone. You're kind of, yeah. Open guessing what you think it'll be to build your budget and then. Be ready to adapt or adjust because it doesn't come out like schools do theirs before. State.
Yeah, and that was also a time when the state had robust revenues through, through oil.
And I think the thing that shocked me the most that I learned since recently joined the legislative committee is going down there is that the education. Fund is the only department in the state that has not been inflation proofed, which really. Interesting. Kind of makes you wonder. For other departments, it's a pertinent policy that it's inflation proofed.
Yeah, like when the governor puts together his budget, all the state agencies. If they've negotiated a new labor contract, the governor's budget. Proposing to fulfill those contracts. We have new labor contracts through. Our negotiations, we agreed to increases in compensation and things like healthcare costs. Doesn't change the governor's line item about the, in starting proposal. They're that. And so it's not something that's like kind of baked into the system. It's, is controlled right now, static statutory.
Is that Governor Dunleavy specific or is it the governor before as well? Do you recall?
I, you know, I'm trying to remember Governor Walker's budget proposals. Relative, I don't remember him doing like proposing increases to the base student allocation. I do remember him really advocating and promoting a fiscal plan. For the state, but he was not successful moving all those pieces through the legislature.
Before we leave this topic and move on to another one, I just wanted to give an opportunity for any. Borough Assembly members, if you have any questions about the correspondence program peak that is run by the Denali Borough School District. Or how the allotment, the school, student allotments for that program work. Like now's a great time. Dan's a lot of information.
Yes, I'm curious about it. So. If a student is enrolled in Peak, I guess how much? I guess, how does that affect what the school district gets?
So every student enrolled in Peak, the state provides us 90%. Of a base student allocation. Okay. That also increases what's called our basic need. And is part of what makes the 3%. As big of a number as. Like the, the enrollment into Peak brings in revenue from the state. In and it increases that. Amount that's actually used and then calculate what. So peak serves us, not just expands and adds a kind of capacity to the district through, through that, through just the state. So Peak serves us, not just expands and adds a kind of capacity to the district through through that, through just the state side. It also says. A borough. You can give a little bit more. And and you've been in a position to be able to do that. That's that's really benefited us quite a bit. And then like with the the families within Peak, kind of again, there's. Amount that we identify each year, it's. Close to three like three thousand dollars. Um, that we work with your contact teacher identifying, getting your plans for my kids. And then educational expenses that would support that plan will be reimbursed.
And and what's what's the feedback from those involved in in right now? Um, as far as. Yes, how satisfied they are a little bit? Or is it, is it? People generally happy with it?
Yeah. And one way you can kind of see that even by just not asking. Yeah, and it's. Because everyone's kind of in their program and everyone pretty much likes their program. If some if people start disliking their program. They go, what do you got over there? And they go to Raven. They go, oh, cyberlinks, maybe you're offering either how much of an allotment or. You're reimbursing for expenses that we don't or. Oh. Idea from Glenna, you guys answer the phone when I call? People then shift on. And you see that. And sometimes parents will reach out and go. Hey, I'm experiencing this problem, whatever it is. And I'm thinking about moving. But I'd really like to stay. And then that gives us information about like others. Talking to Dawn about answering the phone or emails or. Getting us to really look at like the allotment amounts or even just internal processes or. Speed or ease of for those. Just the opportunity to provide those are things that you go. People are say they're leaving us because or they're thinking about leaving. Thank you. The interesting thing is that we also kind of classically learned that most people pick the program they want to homeschool with when they make that choice. Based on what their friend does. That is huge because they go, because they go, I want to do this. I haven't done it before. You homeschool. Who do you use? And if you like it, you'll talk it up. And that's that's how people usually make.
Thanks, Dan.
Before we move on from budget, you guys do have a. F twenty-six budget in front of it. Want to go through anything there? We also have. Oh, get capital stuff and then impacts, but I don't of course highlighting anything. Out of that before we go on to some of the other conversations.
On the F like twenty-six budget, I would be highlighting page two. For the borough. That's the calculation of the of the local contribution.
Yeah.
And on on a tactical basis, like when our budget comes over, the question to you is, um, in a sense, what will you get?
Yep.
And that's the information that is confirmation of that, that we can. To the state. Otherwise, it's reported in the same format and categories as we report to the Department of Education and it's the same structure. In terms of like those first couple of pages, those categories, what we um report out to the board each month. It's different from like what I think you guys look at it, your budget, I think in your borough budget can get very. Detailed down very specific like line items, dollar amounts, our budgets, much kind of general, much more general broader categories. The other thing I might mention, Chris Nolan and I have been discussing. Kind of dovetailing or linking us to the capital projects conversation, but. The monies for the Tri Valley Roof Project. Which is completed. As part of the concurrent year capital budget from the state, so like some at some time will get. Reimbursed by the state for that. And borough generally times your local contribution to. Like either, forget the exact phrasing, you receive that money or approval from the state in that. And here I were talking about. The potential to borough transferring the portions, your portion of that project. To us in a capital projects fund, which would then put us in a position looking. Able to look just at that fund to try to move forward with the beach field and second project this summer if you get some. Because then we feel like, hey, that's we know that the captain present fund of the district would have funds on hand. The potentially covered of the technicals.
And then one page to the budget has kind of student enrollment. Anderson that shows six and a half, and that's just how students are calculated. And then you just kind of go through like the whole harmless.
Yeah, we're in where that's. We're going to be in the second year of old harmless. And the enrollment figures we took were the. For next year, for the enrollment figures we have during the count period this year. And so in the. Old harmless, it's just a step down over four years from your kind of prior level of funding on a per dollar basis. Down to like your new funding level. Actually, I think it's on your enrollment basis. So there's a change in. BSA. Still, it's done on the student figure. Could be good. But basically you have four years to step down. One of the concerns we have, you see Camel student count at eleven point seven five. Right now, there are nine students enrolled in Campbell. So if we. Go through the count period next year in our less than ten students account, well. Um, that would be an additional reduction in revenue of a hundred, another hundred thousand dollars. And when those schools are below ten, they get counted in the next smallest school. And both of those are below ten, they both get counted at Tri Valley. For funding purposes. So they count it, but the way the formula works, you get more. Money per student of a smaller school to deal with economies of scale. So you do have this reduction. So if we project out long term and start going additional years. If those enrollments continue to be low, you see that continued. Pressure on our budget as those kind of blossom revenue centers. And even if they say static, it's still dropping down to get to like the the more natural level. We do see in Campbell in particular, younger students that are very likely to enroll in the community. It's just kind of like. When are they going to get there? Old enough yet, preschoolers that are going there are three years old. So in the four years old, they still know. Counting our K twelve program, we're not approved to count our preschoolers. In our enrollment count yet, but that works better for us because of preschool grant that we have. Anderson frankly is is honestly just more of a question there, like not seeing kind of the natural growth that would bring us into ten. Though we did hear about potentially have a large family moving in and Joe Kraus reached out. You know, again, just welcoming conversations and kind of like, you know. Getting people to kind of realize, yeah, there's a school and it's really small, so maybe. Enrolling the kids that you were thinking about homeschooling and coming up and volunteering is kind of like homeschooling your kids anyway. We got a big job. You know, just, you know, just kind of like looking at it, because we do see. There's a financial pressure when when the school is under ten, you also just more and more beg the question of, you know, what's the educational experience like? And and trying to balance those becomes harder and harder. Either the smaller it gets or as longer stays.
Yeah, what's the what's the expectation? That is a permanent or is it?
But I guess I should remind everybody when we met, I'm not sure how many years ago it was, we were. Downstairs and we were really considering some things as a as a district, you know, whether it was school closure. Talks or whatever, you know, I don't know if you remember that, like, you know, the borough was very much like. We could please keep these schools open, you know, and you know, with that advice and with that support, you know, we have. We have done our absolute best to make sure that those schools remain open to the kids in those communities. I mean, that was that was that that actually kind of came out of this joint. In this joint session, you know, we we were able to talk about it and we heard. Heard what the borough. Had and we respect that partnership with the funding that you give us and. We have been successful.
Yeah, we'd when we had that meeting, didn't expect we'd have twelve kids in Campbell, to be honest.
Yeah.
I also didn't expect that we'd have six kids in Anderson.
We started the year with twelve.
That's it. Yeah. I do appreciate that work and I was thinking that when you made your earlier comment. About having. Those hard conversation different places. It's like we did have those hard conversations here and they were real, but we were. We were ahead of the game. We we saw it coming. We were having those those conversations and we did, we got together and we talked about it. So. Yeah, and I know you guys had those conversations a lot more than we did and. Bless you for doing the things that you do because that is. Hard hard work. Very much appreciated.
We did appreciate that council though and and the insight that the borough. Gave us into supporting those communities. Um, and and how important that was from the borough side. We did, we heard you. We've been doing our best.
Not making it easier. Capital and facilities projects?
Yeah, and that more than anything, it's just kind of. For the. And joint aspect is understanding, remembering that the facilities are. Again, is this kind of weird thing? Technically, the school district doesn't own the buildings, the borough does. Then there's expectation within state. Kind of design a statute and regulation that the borough is helping kind of support the the like large picture maintenance. Of those in the current structure for. Project that goes through the major school maintenance program for our borough is that there's a twenty percent local contribution. Um, while not legally required to come from the borough, it could come from our operating funds. It could come from a a large external benefactor, um, basically anything other than the major school maintenance program. Needs to put in a twenty percent portion. Um, it's important to kind of see what are the things that we're looking at in the future. So that plans can be made for that that portion, be able to be there to support the project. We generally apply for three projects at a time and then our list, like the first one, two, three, like test, I'd always look. Those like the real solid ones that we like want to do, we know we want to do those. After that, we we are start to be softer ideas. There's things that like, yeah, we know we want to do, but a lot of times we haven't done like price costings on it, like it's not. There's not a benefit to us given the length of time things take to work through major school maintenance. It's not worth our effort to try to true things out more. And so. It's quite possible that those other projects could shift, but we could see something that's lower, go wait a minute, that's. A bigger priority and start moving that up or put shape to it and start putting numbers to it. So always think like those later ones. Could shift around. As as things just kind of naturally happen to the buildings and we see either costs or opportunities within those, but those top three projects. Um, we. Tri Valley septic work, district-wide electrical upgrades, if you remember those of you that were like on the tour of Camp, well, when we did that, we looked at those like. Really old electrical boxes with those like um. Vintage circuits that are in there and those are again, those are in all three schools that we'd love to be able to to update. And then the other project is generator replacement for Anderson and Campbell, where we're in. Going to have an order undergoing right now and construction of a generator for Tri Valley that we're working on. With the borough as well. Those are like our three big projects that we're looking at. And so again, if you look at a twenty percent match for those. About a hundred thousand dollars. First project. A little over two hundred thousand for the second project and. Between three and four hundred thousand for that that fourth project, just kind of giving you an idea of looking at like if you want to be able to provide that support. What you want to be kind of thinking about for that major school maintenance fund that you you establish. And we continue. Again, through kind of fortunes of some finances that happened really right as I was transitioning in a superintendent. The total kind of monies that generally sit in our capital fund, if we haven't. Paid for a project is about two million dollars. Which puts us in a position unlike most districts that we can do a project. Get the engineering gun done, get it done well, work with the department, get everything in line. Have a fully completed project. And that scores really well on that list. And then we just kind of wait for them to then fund it, recapitalize it, and then we say, okay, let's go to the next project. And it's really helped us because. In some ways I feel bad, we have. Leapfrog districts that in some ways might have more critical need. Because they can't do this and get projects taken care of. You know, superintendent was talking about underground fuel storage tank with like, you know. It's been on the list for sixteen years. We don't have projects that have been. As we were able to do that, that helps the scoring mechanism. It's just something that we're really fortunate to be. And from like the projects, the waste water project is number fifteen on the state's capital list. I remember I would need. Around forty thousand? Forty-five billion dollars in the in the capital budget to major school maintenance to be funded, which. Is in the realm of possibility. It's around the range that has been funded some years, like last year is a hundred million dollars. But the year before was zero. Kind of comes and goes because it's it's that discussion. How much money do we have? We spend it on major school maintenance. We don't have it on, we we don't have it for BSA.
If it was already done. It'd be top five or whatever.
Awesome. I mean, it would. It would move up because right now we don't have like engineering done on it. If you have engineering. That moves it up.
Dan, remind me and I made, I'm hoping I'm not the only one that gets wishy-washy on this aspect of what we're talking about, our overall budget and their. Contribution and then, but when it comes to the buildings because they own them, is that still within that? Uh, amount that the state would, you know, remove? Or is this a, this is additional money that they can support the school system like?
It would be additional. So like.
Okay.
Monies. There's there are some things caught up by that, like monies for the. Major school maintenance or the schools, like major school maintenance fund are outside of that type of contribution.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you.
Um, on your capital projects. Page, you have two projects that are dot dollar amounts for twenty thirty-one. And your minor, those projects that will maybe we could look forward to seeing jump the list in the future or?
We have numbers for those projects because those are the projects that we worked up for recent grant applications.
Okay, gotcha.
Like the community change grant, which I think pretty certain we're feeling we're not getting. Like that's why those have numbered.
Okay, I was just gonna say, because the dollar in twenty thirty-one might look a little different.
Right. Those were the amounts that we put in the grants and we looked at what are those grant opportunities? What could qualify for that in a in a school building? Let's write that up. We. Included those in two different grant applications. Yeah, it's good to have the information.
No, yeah, absolutely. I was just just curious, you know, I I like to prove that I actually look at the things.
It it does remind me and um. Shout out to Mr. Dave Evans, he's streaming online, but when he was on the assembly, he pushed really hard for us to do the school facilities assessment. Yeah. Which is. Almost ten years ago now, eight, I don't know how many, eight years ago, whatever it was, quite a while. But I do feel like it served us really well. And having that, but having outside firm come in, evaluate all our buildings. Sketch out some projects, kind of give us a, you can probably describe it better than I, but a broad level, like a scope. For a lot of the different projects, have help and prioritize things. And it's been really satisfying to see all those get plunked off the list, check, check, as they as they come through.
It helped identify and give structure to the big projects and a lot of internal small work too. It guided a lot of things that are, don't show up in documents that really. Like preventative work that we've been able to do and just go like, all right. Go and. Deal with all those outlets that, you know, we're showing up hot and then it's like, okay.
So I'm not sure where the lifespan of that effort. Um, but that would be something I'd be be interested in. I know it took a couple of years to get that. Out of Mr. Evan's brain and like into motion and actually completed, but. If that that's something that we should do on a. if that that's something that we should do on a, you know, if we're due for another one of those, I do see, you know, the the TBDs along this list, if that's something that would kind of help flush that out. Money we can put towards our facilities without coming out of your budget. And another question that I had regarding like some of that engineering stuff, like when it comes to our twenty percent match, we have our um, major school maintenance reserve front on the assembly. But if we did want to do, you know, engineering on the septic system, we're going to put twenty percent of a match towards it anyway. Can we pay that and still have that? Like, can we pay that twenty percent match ahead of time and say, it's like, okay, we already paid for the engineering and like still have that count as our contribution?
As long as we document it. And and the that total amount includes the engineering work. And so when that twenty percent comes at the end, it it's also twenty percent of the engineering, twenty percent of the construction.
Is the school currently waiting to receive the funds from the roofing project in order to move on any of these elements?
We've been kind of waiting like for the septic one. Again, just kind of like that. Sometimes with discussions on like what that, what's that BSA amount going to be and stuff, it's like rather than potentially signing a half a million dollar construction contract, it's like, let's make sure there's money in the CIP. So that when that comes to do, there's no chance that it's going to hit operating budget. So that was part of the conversation Chris and I had about if the borough provided that twenty three percent relative to the roof project, which is done, which has been approved in the capital budget, like it it'll happen at some point once Dean finishes the payment. Down would then kind of capitalize that fund at the point that we're like, oh, okay, we'd cover the septic. And and even with Mayor Walker, like the twenty percent, it was like just he liked, and so something the borough considers, he liked that kind of almost control mechanism of, hey, when the state approves it, when the state funds it, whatever the language was, that's that's our trigger that the project is like greenland, get the go ahead on that. Just, that was kind of the structure of the resolutions ordinance is that that he put. And I would assume that those are kind of same structures that you'd look at the things in the future, but then that was some of the reason for it. It's just kind of like helping relying on that vetting process and funding process through the state to to provide that. Also, we were, you know, because of the funds that we have, we've also been in a position where when the actual construction is coming in a little high or they ask for maybe the state wants to have you do some value engineering to stay within your cost mechanisms, but give maybe a less valuable project because it doesn't quite do the stuff you want. We've been able to say, no, no, we want it like this, like this is really the design we want. We don't want to cut that corner to save save that. That's not a long term savings for us. And it's helped us spend a little bit more and the district's been able to manage that because we can have that fund, I mean, kind of do a logically drawdown about that with a two hundred thousand dollar problem. It's going to be okay.
Is, um, we haven't talked about it for a while, but the the drain piping issues that we've had. Sorry. Is that part of the septic upgrade at all?
No.
That's going to be a separate.
If if that were to happen, it'd be completely separate. Then again, then we're talking about the Tri Valley library bathrooms with the blockages. Nothing this year. So we're thinking we've got it flowing.
We don't know where it's going, but it's not.
This project would basically go from the back of the school.
Okay, so just septic.
Yeah, it would probably disrupt the softball field this summer. So whenever summer happens.
Like a new dirt in the softball field. Grass out there doesn't have any problem.
If if we had long term issue with like those bathrooms draining out the current pathway, we'd actually probably reengineer it and have it shoot out to the side. Because the pipe right now goes down the middle of the library, cuts over at a forty five degree angle, leaves the library and it goes underneath a couple of classrooms and then attaches to the main pipe that runs the length of the building underneath everything else.
So to rebuild the school.
Yeah, so get accessing that pipe inside the building would be.
I remember, yeah, I remember. She are something I look forward to.
Just to kind of so I understand it as well. You know, so there's an opportunity, you've got them prioritized to go after number one. You're kind of looking at it as managing capital budget. And if the money comes back from the state, you know, that might spur you starting again, number two. And just kind of work down that. How often, I know this is a six year plan, but how often is this good?
Every year. Okay, we look at it every year. You have to update it uh with full board approval every year as part of your annual application for major school maintenance.
We have our capital improvement plan as well that we are self imposed, I think. To have that in place for ours and we have made uh, pretty good efforts over the last number of years to get in line because the timing for the school districts capital proven plan of ours, they're offset enough, but since so much of our capital improvement plan is focused on the school buildings as well that the thing that I look for is like, are all these matching up? Like, I think it's good that you guys are operating the buildings and know what the priorities are, but just want to make sure that that we have in our plan is 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 matching up pretty well. Because there was a time where they didn't match up at all and that was a a strange place to be when it's like, oh, what are you asking the state for? It's like, oh, that's different than what we have on our capital list. What's what's that all about?
I'm looking and I go there, lockstep for the first four and then we might have shifted some priorities. And we approve it like six months different from your approval. So it's always this weird kind of leapfrog game.
Well, we we review our capital plan every year as well with the budgets. Now that we know how you've changed your list, ours.
Right. And if you do things that we're like, oh, that's a good idea, but six months later, we will incorporate that or go like, oh, that was a bad idea. It's shift kick again.
I have a question. Do we do we just suspect that this old older leach field and wastewater treatment system is probably going to fail soon? Do we have some some clues, some evidence?
But no, the, I think the the clue is that it's beyond like it's it's predicted lifespan. So we're like, every year's a good year. You know, it's 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 just aged to the point that it's like you can replace that. Because you don't want it to fail.
Yeah, if it fails, it's catastrophic. You can't, I I don't, I'm dealing with this at work and I'm keeping a push that we should replace our things now because if we wait until they fail, we're shut down.
Looking at the cost of that versus some of the others that are out there, has anyone thought about bypassing the having the state pay for it and having it take a little bit longer versus prioritizing it in-house, so to speak?
Well, I think that's like the the person I'm talking about was, in a sense, it doesn't bypass the state, but it means don't wait for the state to reimburse us for this septic. Like, we want to do the the septic and leach field long before they actually approve it.
Get it done.
Right, get it done. We we want them to pay us back for the two million dollars that we spent on the roof. So we can use that money to pay for the septic. Or again, if Borough would be comfortable transferring the funds, that would then let us move forward into the septic. While you still wanted to go through that process with the state because it's one of those, well, the state's going to pay the percentage. Even if we have to wait a while, we can get the project done and still wait.
Is there a way to test uh leach fields to see how healthy they are? Anybody, anybody?
Yes, but it's it's the the issue because of where we live. And what kind of a facility it is, like we don't use it in the summer very much. And so when it fails, it's almost always going to be in the winter. Um, like you, you can, you can do a perk test and and see like, get an indication of how healthy it is. I don't know. I, it seems like septic systems, some septic systems fail gradually and you can see it coming. You know, a friend just, you know, having their, they're trying to sell their house and so they're they're having a septic system test and everything. And you can, you can usually tell when things are going. But sometimes especially in the winter, um, things happen pretty rapidly. Um, not that I'm a huge expert on on big septics, but it's, I don't know, sometimes you know, and sometimes it just happens.
And I just think we're really fortunate that we don't even have to, you know, deal with that yet. And so it's a good thing that it's on the list. Better to deal with that than having to figure out what what do you do with a hundred and seventy kids in the winter time in the middle of the winter. I mean, that 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 would just be a huge thing. And so, um, you know, I think it's just going back to that financial, that truly financial comfortability that we have a little bit that and that partnership with the borough that, you know, they can help us spend some of that while we're waiting for this. This that we've almost been always able to pay per project and then just wait for the funding instead of having to wait for a complete fail. I mean, the roof at Tri Valley was pretty close. Sure, it was pretty close. But, you know, it wasn't a complete foul and so, but we were able to do it, you know, in advance of of having a complete failure and, you know, maybe having to shut down parts of the building or whatever it may have led to. So I just, I think that just shows that that that, you know, that partnership that we have and just that financial, I mean, stability that we have truly good luck to go.
I think for me, the leading indicator on the wastewater project was the report that you gave after they scoped the pipes underneath the library. If the pipes underneath the library, which is one of our more regularly used um, assets in the school with the summertime community library and all the things that go on year round there. If that's what those pipes look like, in my mind, it's pretty easy to assume that the rest of those pipes look either very similar or even worse because they do kind of dry out every summer.
In the tank itself.
In the tank itself. I mean, these school buildings are seventy something years old now.
Main chunks, older chunks of Tri Valley.
Which would, in my which would assume to include that septic, that septic system.
That's original.
Well, there was stuff before that.
The the septic system we're using now was built in the seventies?
Yeah, I believe so.
Oh, my God.
That's impressive.
Right.
I mean, I could be.
It's like Walt would like to be there when you rip it up.
You know, I'm trying to remember, Curtis told me that some of the pipe was wood. Or no, it's not. You couldn't be able to confirm that. No, it's not. Okay.
No, yeah, you know, you're if if somebody's coming to test a a leach field, they they just send a bunch of water that way and you just measure how much how much water drains over a period of time. That's how you know if it's if it's failing or passing. But to get to the leach field, you have to go through all the pipes and tanks and everything else. And if they've been in there for fifty years, whoa, it smokes. That is, that's.
Yeah, I'm so scared.
I'll be honest, design life.
It's almost springtime. It's okay.
The indication is this a one summer project, two summer project?
Time with Curtis sounds like a one, one summer.
Is it the, I mean, we can't necessarily agree to this, but is the timing right if if during our budget season, we say, yeah, let's double hedge our bets. Does that cut that pretty close for summer?
Well, again, I'd say your first thing again, when Chris and I were talking about wasn't like a new budgeting cycle was really looking at your existing either resolution ordinance on providing that and kind of going, has the, have the conditions been met? Are they close enough to being met? Does he need to come back to the assembly to go? Let's pull the trigger on this because no one knows why deed's taking so long.
So trying to get do it this summer.
Curtis thinks that if we pull the trigger pretty quick, I'm getting an R P on that. We might be able to get it done. And if it looks like we can't get it done or it's commensurally high. But I can try to find out if we know exactly when it was built. If not, I assume.
I think you'd be in that. I think you should be in our facilities.
In the report.
Assessment. I would be massively impressed if that's seventy.
Impressed seems better. Impressed but not surprised.
Bring him back. Whoever did it. I want to say the residential systems are only like they tell you fifteen years. I mean, most will go to thirty, but fifty is a whole other game.
That was a suggestion or a maintenance that they suggested putting uh cakes of yeast in your septic to activate all of the bio line in it. And it's supposed to help break down the flood and everything faster and give you more space and more life to the system. I was like, sounds interesting.
In warmer climates, I think it can be really effective. Yeah, yeah. Tough to get that. All the organisms growing, cold ground. Okay, um, impacts of federal funding and staff reductions?
Yeah, this was just something that that Chris and I thought of. You know, a week or two ago, just kind of like the open discussion about how they with shifts in the in the federal government's actions that are being taken, it's kind of like, hey, what what impacts are we we seeing, whether that's direct to our organizations or to the community as a whole, which then has impacts back back to us as well. Funding piece for the school, federal funding is a pretty small portion of our budget, like two and a half percent, so not not significant. It's like if it were all to just go away, not like a huge thing. So I tell people like, I'm not paying too much attention to that because I I compared to Juno, right, like a tiny bit influence. I got no influence in Washington, so I know where I'm going to focus my energies, where the bigger money is, where I've got some where kind of go, oh, something to watch when we see it coming down the pipeline. I don't know if the the borough is seeing anything potential in terms of federal mines that it might receive, but then just the conversation about like, yeah, we know that there are people in our community that are no longer employed, employed a couple of weeks ago. Checking out implications to whether or not they keep living here.
Yeah, I think, I mean, from the borough, it's it's tough because, you know, so much of the revenue is driven by the bed tax, which Earl's not going to know until after the season's over really, you know, because they do them quarterly. What impact any of that has? So it's, I feel like it's a big unknown kind of when it comes to that, like thankful that the borough's forefunded and, you know, is in a good place to at least start that. But yeah, you know, hearing concerning things around the community and you know, I'm definitely very impactful and be, but he's starting to be.
I believe there's been over a dozen positions lost so far. I think between the probationary firings and then the resignations, there's a resignation offer that was out there, but I think fourteen points is kind of the number I have in my head.
I just saw the release today that the outdoor education backpacking programs are not going to happen this summer, which is, you know, it's very unfortunate, but.
Sorry, that's where I work. It's the day camps and they're potentially having, they're definitely not doing the backpacking programs at the park. Looking to pivot, but yeah.
Well, but I mean, just as a borough perspective, right, that's handfuls of families that are not going to be spending the night here and to now like their kid is out enjoying that experience. So, I mean, it's kind of a marginal impact on our overall structure, but it's it starts small, right? Structure, but it's, it starts small, right? And then. As we continue down this uncertain road that we're traveling on. The implications could easily multiple things.
Less kids in school, right?
Right. We got families moving away.
Economic impacts that come from that.
Our census population was sixteen hundred. I don't know the number of kind of. Jobs held in the borough by borough residents. You know, again, validity in some sense, census figures sixteen hundred people and fourteen people. Here's a couple of weeks ago, you're, you got about one percent of the total people. And again. Ten year olds don't have a job, so you can start subtracting them sixteen hundred if you go. A lot of our neighbors are no longer.
I did realize there was good news somewhat related, or I don't know if it was somewhat related, but just this idea of like, we have this impact to, to, to us as, as people. And then impacted to us as like these. Public entities with like either tax revenues or dependence upon your tax revenues. And the movement in the state legislature to approve the bonding authority to replace the sewer dock. Which it increased the number of ships and size of ships that cruise industries can bring into the sewer. Again, if you remember the conversations from like Ralph Samuel when he comes up, people letting that cross Gulf journey. Continue up to the provinces. So more people helps fill those rooms, the new construction that they're doing. Add rooms down there this summer, additional hotels that have come online, like there's, we know there's still like that. Interest and support. To bring in people that are paying the revenue side. It's just the impact that. Things might have on our employment opportunities or the current employment.
The park service did here, sorry, that, uh, we didn't, we, we are approved to hire seasonal staff. Now, uh, so those, all those announcements went out like a flood of them yesterday, I think, and, um. So that, that bodes well, but then you have to have staff to manage those seasonals and that's a little bit of a concern because there are an additional set of. Reductions in force and some other, um. Methods that, that might be used in the next. For months to reduce the number of overall employees. Now the park service is always, you know, we, we sit well with the, um, American community. Um, uh, we have a lot of support. Uh, we have also heard that they're going to, um, any reductions in the national park service would probably happen at regional offices. Or national, um, offices, not in parks. They try. The utmost to protect people and, and staff in parks, so that, um, that sort of boats, boats well for us. See how things go.
Uh, just a note on, I guess, encouraging our neighbors to be involved in their community. Um. There, there's, there's a, a growing sentiment at work right now of like, hey, this isn't fair. You know, because we, we all know, and, and, you know, people that I work with have family members, you know, spouses and things that. That, um, aren't losing their jobs, but, um. Where there, there's a sentiment of where was this outrage, you know, two years ago when they were telling us that, you know, like sixty of us were losing our jobs. Like, like fourteen people lose their jobs and it's like the whole world is coming down and we're looking at shutting down. Half the town and. I, it feels like there's a lot more outrage now than it was then. And I, I don't know, I, I hopefully it's a good wake up call for people to just get involved. You know, it's, it's. Livelihood, you know. Yeah, doesn't matter what a person does, you know, if we can keep our, our businesses going and, and, you know, not just. You know, this one service that, that we, we enjoy, but like every service, every business that's, that's here. Try and get everybody supporting them and being involved in them. Um, you know. Golden Valley's official position, well, okay, I'm gonna be quiet about Golden Valley. Um, but, uh, but just, just support local businesses as much as we can. Um, you know, obviously for the school system, it's, it's important to keep people here critical. Um, and, you know. When a family is forced to leave because they can't earn a living, it impacts everything. Yeah, just as awful as this is for everybody, um, yeah, hopefully. We can get some momentum like, hey, pay attention to what's going on around you and stay involved.
Cause then that announcement with G B A went out, they don't have.
We had several.
Family with kids. I got, cause that person, I need to look out for my future, my family's future. Okay, I know I'm gonna be in that. I'm gonna go secure something else for us right now. It hasn't come to pass, but I know they meant, you know, in a sense, they made the right decision, cause it's a decision that they come themselves and it impacted them in fact. So I was wondering with, with G B A, and I don't know if we might. But if there's impact on some of their future plans, like they even discussing like the, the heat storage battery aspect here. If those kind of plans are tied to federal funds that are now in question. I did hear from Chris in, in the paper that the non-G B A. Plans for like the soul of Paul May Anderson, something like that's.
That's done.
That's not happening though.
Um, so without sharing too many details for those of you that don't know, I also on the Golden Valley board, so. First thing I would like to address your comment about how the, the boys down in the power plant say this isn't fair. It could very well be that we've recognized that we didn't respond then. And so you're getting a gross overcur- I'm not a gross overcorrection, but an overcompensation now. Cause we did lose a lot of our friends and neighbors when that announcement came out. So maybe. What you're seeing now is more of like, we missed the ball last time. We're definitely swinging the bat this time. Just as like a positive spin on that. Um, so from a Golden Valley perspective, it was announced. Tuesday, actually, my meeting on Tuesday. Um, the federal funding that is related to. The two big projects that they were awarded funds for, for this year has been a part of the ninety day hole. But Golden Valley in particular, and this is not the case for utilities everywhere, but we had already kind of received those promissory notes. So there is potential. That that funding will be re-released. But we were also directed by our, um, legis- our lobbyists and our guy paying attention now in Juneau right now. That to go forward now would be very much at our own risk. So Golden Valley, again, in the kind of limited financial streets as everybody else. Has decided to not currently go forward with some of these things. We're now exploring. Different alternatives as, as we hear the legislative updates from, from Juneau. So. It's very much still. Not off the table, but it's definitely like, I'm kind of full right now over here. We're, we're making contingency plans, I guess is what I'd say. So if we can't get what we're, what we have been awarded or what we've been trying to work for. We are now working on, okay, but then what? And we're trying to figure out the best way to bring overall value to, to our members, which is all of us sitting here. So. It's, um, it's equally stressful at that table as well currently. But I was there for three days.
There, I know there was a lot of staff cuts, um, just politically with the Department of Education, like at the national, like federal level. You describe quickly like relationship that that has, just like in terms of like, like when you talk about Department of Education funding. Is there's like impact aid, but in terms like what comes to like our school district? Is that a?
The easiest way to take a look at it, and I, I will probably not even remember like what the actual. Titles and categories stand for, but if you look at our monthly budget report, not the, the approved budget, but the. Fifth page that shows the grants. The kind of middle sections, there's federal grants recurring, it looks like this.
This one right here.
So you know that page of that, that's our federal monies. And so you look at that, a lot of the federal money, like the big part is the title sixteen special education. Kind of like the main purpose, kind of focus of, of federal and education is really focused on especially. Kind of constitutional and federal structure of the United States really says education is a state. Responsibility. It's not one of like this responsibility is really identified with the federal government. They got involved with, with things like, hey. School systems. You're, you're ignoring this population. And that's not right. And so they passed some law, I D A, the Individual Disabilities Education Act. Was one that said you need to consider and actually educate students with disabilities. Whether that's physical disabilities, significant mental impairments and developmental disabilities, we're kind of minor more learning disabilities. You, you need to be educating them. And since we're putting this onus on you, recognizing maybe haven't done a great job of it. In, in the past, uh, we will support you and we will pay half of the costs of those. And so since that time, they funded about fifteen percent. They've never fulfilled the intention of the act, which was to fund this, this very large portion of it. And so you see that line about two hundred thousand dollars for us. That's the main chunk of, of the. Other things address kind of smaller, other kind of programs of, of federal interest or importance in, in different areas. The first couple, uh, that's a, that's the elementary, uh, elementary and secondary education act. It's the kind of big governing law about kind of federal programs that just support trying to improve education. Sometimes under, again, kind of influences, um. Sometimes a lot of like civil rights aspects, again, you know, you think of schools and some of like kind of the, the history of schools. It's like, hey. You're not letting everybody in. You gotta let everybody in. The federal government took two steps. To do that and they still do a lot of monitoring work and try to support it. It's along that in different ways. Um, the title one grants are often kind of geared at supporting students, um. And, and already people with like low economic status is that's what qualifies us for those funds, is number of students in. Certain, uh, income levels and then intention, then it's the funds are designed to be used to support like reading mathematics. Given kind of large picture statistical stuff showing an achievement gap. Between students that are experiencing poverty or lower income relative to people who kind of average or.
Well, it's like three fifty-ish, three hundred.
If, if I add up all the things that are like federal, federal, like the school improvement, I, I actually go, that's a. State grant tied to the, the school improvement system, the safety and wellbeing, one is a state grant. I entirely all this up and I got three hundred and four thousand dollars in on revenue. I did the math before I came over, it's two point five percent. Other school, there's, you know, those, those grants are formula driven, so based on population size, population, uh, percentages, different categories. Um, so different school districts would have different numbers and figures and slightly different percentages. But again, it's in those low single digits, usually for all.
So whatever shakeup happens at the federal level, you'll see. Affecting the day-to-day operations of the schools.
No, and definitely not in like the quick way, like even some of the. Kind of hypothesizing, like if the federal government were to remove the Department of Education. Like the underpinning laws still really stand. Like the individual disabilities education act still stands, it still needs to be managed somewhere in the federal government. Cause that law, I remember it was passed in nineteen seventy-two, was made an apartment until later sentence.
Thank you for that. Go on to, uh, schools as community resource centers.
Yeah, this came up and. You know, Chris and I were talking. And. Kind of growing up from, from our, on the school side, kind of like, kind of that aspect, some discussions that we have like in Anderson. Especially where we see a pretty significant, you know, building footprint. And, and kind of this wonder about like, what? What ideas, what options might there be? What interest is there even community wise? Trying to think of. Some way to, to help make these spaces more usable by communities, um. And Anderson's a great example, just given the size of it, the, the relative student population, there's a lot of, of space and harder and more. Used or full space where you go like, oh, we don't have like kind of a room that could be. Either, either rented out or remain available to like a homeschool and co-op or something like that. But just thought it might be a good opportunity as a work session to kind of go like, what thoughts might people have? Maybe there's something that can be done or we see what interest there is or interest there isn't in, in different opportunity.
So, I'm still too much over here, under Eric. And I've, I've been attending the Anderson City Council meetings and. You know, we've done the facility tour at Anderson and there's two very large, very nice shops. In Anderson School, one's more of like a mechanical, maybe welding bay kind of deal. The other one is, um, like carpentry. So when you talk about. You know, heaven forbid, we don't get the students we need to keep Anderson. Well, but what does the borough do? With this now banking asset? Maybe we look into that housing or the C T E curriculum. Maybe we offer adult learning, um. Or we could do activities in the gym, I mean. We already have the established adult basketball, adult soccer that's here, right? But maybe there's activities that we could do. There, um, whether that's bringing instructor down for Fairbanks or what have you, um. I'm gonna stop talking about it, but I do want you to talk about some of the other ideas that you've.
Feeled it, yeah. Um, so looking forward, I like to prepare, you know, have best. Hope for the best, prepare for the worst, right? Uh, right now with the housing situation, just kind of the lack thereof, um. Housing that's actually available. There's lots of abandoned houses, but we don't have a lot that are available as rentals or a lot that are currently for sale and listed. Um, in Anderson. Um, and so there's not a lot of places for families to move, even with the potential of a, a ten person family coming in. Like where are they going to go? Uh, and so. Looking forward, unfortunately, it seems inevitable that we may not be able to meet that ten person. So looking forward, it's like, what do you do with this big building? Uh, and I, I've been advocating, um, to, you know, add C T E classes, um, even just. As soon as we can possibly, um, is after, afternoon or adult learning classes in the evening. Um, reaching out to Abtech or U A F and the trade unions, seeing if there is some support in bringing, you know, instructor down. Um, because I do believe that coming from Healy, um, in Cantwell, people would be willing to drive to Anderson or be driving to Fairbanks. Um, in order to get that education. I also know that one of the bigger things that our borough and our, our smaller towns are experiencing is. You know, that outgrowth, we don't have somebody to step into these positions for the electricians that are leaving and the plumbers that are leaving. And Ray Evans, who, you know, is the gravel guy, but like for how long, you know, like in all reality, we have a, a much older like demographic that's retiring and moving out. Um, and we need to support, find a way to support, you know, bringing that education to the kids and to the, the younger population here. That wants to live here and is willing to invest here and, you know, wants that education as well, you know, and, and really kind of home grow. Those plumbers and electricians and, and tradespeople. Um, and I think that Anderson is a fantastic asset to be able to do that, especially in the afternoons and evenings for adult learning. Um, currently, um, I also, you know, there's a lot of homeschool kids in that air part of the borough. Um, and I think that it would be a huge like, um, amenity to offer almost like a homeschool co-op within there. Um, where, you know, multiple different homeschools could have a place to send their instructor or their person to come and check in with these homeschooled kids. That are part of these programs that are not, uh, local, uh, like peak is, um, you know, and or cyber links is for our area, you know. Um, the kids that are part of the idea program or Raven program and things like that. And also adding that social. And also adding that social education, um, that isn't there currently when people are homeschooling individually and don't have a place to gather and meet. Um, there are multiple homeschool co-ops within like Fairbanks and and Anchorage that, you know, a lot of people. Use and advocate for with their um, homeschool programs. Um, and I think that's a really good way to do it. I know that the city of Anderson. Our city building is in total disrepair, we have a hole in the roof, the floor is kind of sort of starting to give. It's been there since the seventies, it was dragged over from the base, so like it's aged. Um, and it would be nice for the city of Anderson to have, you know, um, the ability to to. Rent preferably, um, you know, part of that building, we also in the city of Anderson code have. Um, you know, writings for daycare and to establish a daycare in there. And you know, there's there's housing there, my husband and I were able to go there and buy a house for fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's allowed me to be a stay at home mom, you know, we are very comfortable on his um, salary and. That's our family demographic, but there's a lot of families in the area that can't afford that three hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home price tag. And would love to own their own home and, you know, yes, it's starter homes, it's nothing glorious, it's not middle class dream homes by any means, but. It is a place that, you know, people could come and, uh, you know, and be able to commute. To to Healy to to work, but be able to afford to live and not have to be house poor in order to do it. And for the city of Anderson to be able to advocate for the daycare, with a homeschool co-op and these type of things, it would encourage those people to to come to the community. And it would also stop from having this giant blighted property, which is this beautiful school with all of these amenities. And these things that could be offered to the entire community, um. If, you know, for any reason, it can't be operated as a school. And so that is something that, um. I I'm advocating heavily for because what I don't want to see is another empty building. Or, you know, um, for us to not be prepared and, you know, at the end of the day. If we do only have six kids come October of next year, it's inevitable. And we need to understand that and accept it kind of and and kind of swallow the reality there and. And how are we going to move forward and not let it be just an empty building or, you know, kind of just another place that. Is falling in honestly within our community, you know, and that's and that's not just Anderson. Cantwell and Healy, you know, have both seen a little bit of that outward migration as well that, you know, has affected our state heavily. Um, and so it's it's how do we create places that people want to come? Also, the nice part about having it all in one building, you know, is a is a place for people to kind of rebuild the community that they're in. Um, you know, having the ability to rent some of those classrooms or things like that would allow people that want to start businesses that don't have the ability to build a hundred thousand dollar building. Or, you know, put something up like that, have the ability to cost share or pay rent and and a place to do that, that's, you know, a solid foundation. So using not just Anderson, but potentially Cantwell as resource centers, um, for the communities to. To cost share and and, you know, build themselves under one roof would be huge.
I think those are a lot of great ideas. Um, I just, I hear the theme with both of you, like, is that something that is? Can can some of those ideas be enacted while there is, like now, like while there is a school, like or has seemed like it was. If there's not, these are some things we could do, but it sounded like maybe the conversation started as. You know, what can we do now to have schools as resource centers or am I looking at that more?
Kind of both, I mean, it's kind of looking at like, from my side, kind of like this, like, as the school still exists and functions as a school. Like, are there things that would help build connection in the community, location of her for services, interest things such that?
I I like to collect information stuff and at our school board conference. Um, this actual idea came up about um, career development. In local community and how can the schools help interact with that? Um, Alaska carpenters unions are very much into building their craft and educating people about that. The plumber skill, the electrician skill, um, this is a uh, curriculum that. Offers um, K through twelve computer science curriculums. Um, can also roll into um, adult education. I was at a curriculum meeting the other night and we were looking at a vendor. Um, that has certification programs, they have the software already developed. They are looking at places for this to go. Um, which I think is a huge advantage and it doesn't have to be specifically that one, but that specific one is set up for. All of the education up to the search, then you go pay the the fee, take the test and you have the search, um, Adobe. The um. Drone pilot education program, they have a whole list, but those are just ones I'm remembering off the top of my head that we went. That would be really cool. Um, and we have some kids at Tri Valley that are playing with drones. Cyber programming, um, with the Minecraft platform. Um, I have a grandson that is very much plugged into Minecraft and he is also. Gotten into a um, design program with. It's not Funky Kong, what's the, it's another video game and I just told you all sort of last, but. Uh, Mario Brothers. And so, uh, a lot of these. Um, game platforms are going into designing and programming. Platforms to teach kids how to interact and and program and learn some of those things and so, you know, just. Different ideas, but software and a computer lab could go a long ways as well.
I have a question about the. Homeschool co-opping.
Yes.
When those get together, is it? Family of them the same program remotely, or is there models where? I don't know how many different homeschool programs are throughout the state, but but if they're if they're not in peace, do they do they get together and? Share things outside of that curriculum, or is it usually kind of organized around one school as like remote location?
Or like one school, but that's, it's like, any, any design you could think of is probably happening somewhere within homeschool. But oftentimes, like within a program. And whether it's a parent initiated or potentially like a staff member initiated would be like. Kind of an announcement out to the people usually within that program, hey, everybody on Tuesday. We're gonna have a group coding and Minecraft activity. Hey, everybody on Wednesday. Future farmers of America is gonna. Hey, on Thursday, maybe it's gonna be a group yoga class, come on in. And so tends to be within kind of like that program, because it'd be held like within those that programs offices and just communication, but. The idea of a a homeschool co-op, like originally really was, you're homeschooling your kids. Don's homeschooling her kids, Walt, you're homeschooling your kids. And each of you are comfortable teaching one subject and really uncomfortable teaching another subject, but luckily. Those are the exact subjects that the others of this triad feel comfortable with. And so in a sense, you get together and you're you're taking the math, you got that, you got the science there, you're taking the uh. And everybody's having, you kind of like, like kind of share and and help that responsibility, that's kind of like the nexus of how how just a general co-op started. So I can look anyway, but then a lot of times it's kind of like that organized structure within the program giving, also giving a physical space for people.
Yeah, I was part of one of those in Oregon, um, I homeschooled my kids up, um, my youngest through middle school and the other three uh, up to high school. Um, and it was very organic like that, the parents in the community said, hey, we want to do a co-op. Um, they had a church that volunteered space. Um, and we said, okay, you know, we have this many hours, we're gonna schedule out and we have this many rooms and we have this many kids, how, what can we do? You know, so some people said, oh, we want to have music because music is something we can do together. But the kids separately practice and then don't have a performance phase for. Um, we did uh, art because not all the parents were artistic and we had. A math guru that loved to play math with the kids and, you know, um, and so it it. That's how it happened and and, you know, we didn't have programs that paid us to homeschool, we just. Talked it up ourselves and said, okay, you know, here's here's the hat, pass it around kind of thing. But uh, it was, it was really fun, I really enjoyed it and it gave the kids that social aspect of. Think another one that happened um, in a couple of different other homeschool groups that we were involved, band. And homeschool PE. Um, where one of the churches had a gym and on Thursdays at two o'clock, everybody had. Gym day and and there was a parent that organized it, this is what they did, you know, and. Um, so it it very easily grew into other things because then you have friendships and you find like. Subject matters that you like and you go do these things, you plan this, uh, the trip to the Oregon Aquarium, the Marine Science Center had a homeschool day every year. And so all the homeschoolers in the state migrate to the Marine Science Center. And go, you know, play with jellyfish and catch starfish and, you know, learn about science and stand in the great big. Shark jaws and go, wow, that's pretty big. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in in that community.
Well, and to speak to that, I mean, uh, Ms. Beth and Uva have been doing just awesome, they in this year, they have added a Lego. Had like a Lego club and then um, a four H club and I mean, I was picking up my daughter today and there was. I believe seven homeschool kids that walked into the building right in front of us to go participate in the four H club, so I mean, they definitely are installing it. It currently and like it's awesome and it's really great to see that that many other kids utilizing this the school facility. Um, in the four H one tense, this seems to be really popular, um, which is really exciting for that area as well. So I I really want to give credit to them because we had that conversation and they immediately jumped on it.
And I think our our goal as a school district goes to as uh, 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 for as long as we can to operate those. Um, buildings as schools for children's education there, you know, for parents that, you know, don't feel like they want to bust their kids, you know, that that amount of distance. Or or for whatever reasons it may be, you know, and and I guess I think it'd be, it would be nice to find some. Um, options that work well within a school that makes sense, you know, like in some of these ideas here. I mean, they make sense because we're already a school and, you know, trying to find something that, you know, complements. What we're doing and, you know, getting people into the building, into a community. And then maybe wanted to send their kids there, right? And our school population can grow a little bit and but doing things. While we are operating schools that makes sense with operating schools, I think are things that I would be the most interested in because it's just complimentary, right? And, you know, starting, starting to think about those things that will hopefully bring some better community engagement. Or just some community outreach, um. Yeah, just to make sure that, you know, we're not divesting from the that. The purpose of that building, which is to educate, educate kids.
Richard and then Mr. Alexander.
Okay, yeah, I'm uh, very familiar with Anderson City, the school district. Internally, what goes on during the the school, during session, what goes on afterwards, everything that's been mentioned already exists. Um, there's open gyms, there's like the peak students. You don't have to completely homeschool your child, they can be involved with peak and they have excellent teachers like Mr. Hoffman and Beth there. That can teach that one class and it does help the school district and it does give them what they need. There's really nothing to gain if the school were to close down, there was only, there would only be something to lose. What we need is, uh, there's multiple families and there are plenty of kids that actually live and reside in Anderson. That aren't registered in the school and and that's what's causing problems. Is the the kids aren't being registered, but the facilities there, the opportunities there, the. Uh, the the shops there, there's shop classes, uh, everything's open to the public, they've had. Lines Club meetings, they've had land meetings, they've, uh, it's it's used all the time, so. Uh, nothing gained, everything to lose, what we need to do is get the community to step up. And send their kids to school or at least one class, so that's, that's my say.
Can you hear me? Oh, good, I got it fixed. Uh, yeah, and sort of in addition to that, I mean, all those. Things that everybody talked about is like a wonderful use of the school and better that it's. Sitting empty, but you know, I mean, we do want to have some sort of revenue stream. For the community things, I mean, the students being there, well, the, you know, we get the money from the state for each of the students. But having a lot of community things, uh, you know, there would have to be some sort of revenue stream to kind of offset that. The use and wear and tear and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I would think that like one of the easiest things would be if the. City wanted to lease some space in there for their offices, I can't imagine that. Like too much, that that's seems to me to be an easy do like right away. But I'm not sure how much space or if there's an actual space in there that could be sort of separated from the school portion of it.
Wonder how many, and this, this is probably more for um. People who, yeah, Mr. Hammond and and people who live in in Anderson and know it better, but. Um, how many conversations have you had with people who are not using the school, not registered to the school, who have children there? Um, what's the feedback as to what they would like to see in order to have their children go to the school?
So the number one thing that I've gotten from parents that have their kids either in homeschool or in Nanana and not in Anderson. Uh, because most parents do start with Anderson and then choose to move elsewhere. Um, is that this, the size of the class is just too small. That especially heading into the high school age, like we don't have an issue really getting the elementary kids in as much as we do having the high school kids stay. Because there isn't the CTE programs and there's not, you know, there's not the opportunity to do kind of the typical high school things, there's no. Home or homecoming, because there's just not enough, there's not a basketball team for the boys and girls, there's no. Like band or choir offerings, you know, there's those, those things just aren't possible with the size of the the student body. And Nanana and Tri Valley both have much larger student bodies, um, that do offer those things, so I mean, that definitely draws the older kids out. The homeschool, usually it's people that are very intentionally homeschooling and choose very much that for their children from the get go. Uh, and, you know, even if they do come in and try, so usually they end up coming out and because it's not what they're. They're choosing intentionally to go home.
Yeah, homeschooling, like we talked with a couple of families that that homeschool there and again. They shared from their perspective themselves and other people they know and talk to, that the homeschooling is usually like is very much a. The school could completely different. We're we're still gonna homeschool because that's the choice that we're making, want to be that have that deep day to day connection with their kids, we want to be there kind of guiding them all. And they were saying, yes, not not really, it's not like a negative choice, we're not disliking you. We we like art, we like this better, like, and sorry, sorry, maybe negatively impacts you, we understand the impact. But, you know, family is what's important. And so, I mean, sometimes it's it's good to hear that and then when it's the choice about like size, you just kind of go, yeah. You know, we can double the high school, we still don't have enough for a basketball team. That's that's, that is a truth. And while there's great opportunities and again, the ability to have that big guy, one on one or one on two support from a teacher, like, wow. Uh, that can be amazing. Might not be what a fourteen year old really, and when we think about our experiences growing up, we're like. Yeah, it's hard to position us to go like, that's what I want in my time, rather than something that looks more like what I. Tough, but and I think that the opportunity to like. Just keep trying to like build connections to me looks at either ways to monetize in the way we know how to monetize with a direct enrollment. Or that's connection and leveraging over the peak, or it gives us ideas that lets us find other things. Is that's the thing, like you can't kind of find the other thing if you're not. Is that's the thing like you can't kind of find the other thing if you're not. At least talking about it, she go like, oh, there's that connection, there's that opportunity. Like the interior superintendents are talking to try to stand up a C T E consortium for the districts in the interior. And because we're just like, yeah, we don't know how to get it all together. Because we've each got little pieces that we do things in all our different places and they're really spread out, but we're like, if we keep talking long enough, we'll figure out something. And that'll help all of us. So that's a big thing, just that that conversation, you know, with some of them. Uh every time we do like some staff changes, we always also kind of sit there and think about and we we've kind of bounced back and forth between trying to house pink staff. More locally to try to help build some connection and kind of some current thinking is we're able to do that. Again, it's like we don't have a large peak population in our borough. But trying to then find somebody that like not just checking in the families, but like being very intentional with. Coordinating activities, coopties and things like that to try to build that nexus for all all those people in the area. Um like we thought, hey, if we have that opportunity or get enough. Students kind of outside of that anchorage area where it's where things present to to base the staff member here. Actually basing that like in Anderson makes a lot of sense because we have facility space, we know we've got this kind of localized nexus that. We'd be able to support, you're like. Hey, we can't quite make it all work yet to do that, but like it's something that definitely come to mind much more. I beg it to work, sorry guys.
Thanks for everything.
Yeah, thank you. Um I I guess I just from a from the assembly standpoint, you know, building the building owners, it's like. Go very much not wanting to see those go to waste, certainly don't want to see them shuttered to be community assets. One way or another, like there we we as borough own them, we dedicate them to the schools, I do think that's that's what we want. We want them to be in whatever form that is, you know. So if it is, you know, we start to blur that line even more between uh between homeschool and brick and mortar or whatever it is, like we're creative and. Wanna still make sure whatever, you know, happens, it's a great place to bring your kids and educate them um. Whatever. And then I also just really appreciate like. The Tri Valley School being open for basketball, being open for soccer, community activities, housing the library, like. We don't have like the new community center, whatever it is, but we do have the school and it really does and has for many years like kind of served. That function, so I wanna support that, but it does ask. The school board and the school administrators and the maintenance staff and everything to to pick up that slack and. We give you guys as much money as we can to do that. And it's appreciated, but I I understand that there is, it it's not that K twelve education. And there is like reciprocity that it's like, yeah, okay, well. We'll put up with people here until ten o'clock at night or whatever it is, doing stuff.
When people suggest us like, you know, charge those community use groups, you know, and it's like. Why are we gonna get like charge somebody like fifty bucks to use the gym and like, you know, create hurt feelings and go like, let's see. So next year we're asking for like two point nine plus million dollars. How about we not worry about that hourly fee to use the gym and basketball for a community event?
Suggested donation box.
Close the doors so they lock.
I I do love these conversations around trying to, you know, of course, our our K through twelve. Education comes first undoubtedly, but you know, trying to trying to support our community in bigger ways and. Um I think we are kind of coming to a crossroads, especially, you know, if we're gonna start losing people. Um from, you know, reduced workforce and and other things like. There is this talk of of young people leaving Alaska, young people leaving our borough, young people leaving Alaska looking for better opportunities and like. We talked a lot about this in Juneau and it's like, how do we bring those opportunities here? Like, how do we? Support our communities here and so, yeah, maybe being. I, you know, what brought to the table with the brochures, T M A and stuff, like I think that could be a really. It's hard, we can have really great ideas that sound awesome on paper and then sometimes, you know, you put them out and nobody shows up and you go, why did we? Spend all this time and um I'm not really sure how to bridge that gap, but I, you know. Of cour- you know, K twelve first and then but also like, you know, this is Community Resource Center like, yeah, how do we support? We have these fantastic buildings that are in a lot of ways underutilized, how do we support our community and maybe. bolster this to be a place that people wanna stay, young people wanna stay and build that they have their resources to. Get, you know, really proficient jobs that pay for families and. Three hundred dollar houses or three hundred thousand dollar, you know, properties and raise our families here.
That conversation came up at the conference too with, you know, we. Educate our kids in our schools, we prepare them for college, they go to college, they get a degree in something. And then it's not applicable to where we live. They have to go somewhere else to be employed in that location or that, you know, and so. The the conversation kind of came full circle with, well, then how do we? Train our young people for jobs that exist here and or. Train them in entrepreneurialship so that they can create jobs or create their own businesses today here. You know, how many of us hold down two or three job situations in our families? Because we have to diversify to stay, we have to come up with those small things in between that fill. The winter season when you can't go do electrical work outside. You know, or you know, you don't work it on the plumbing in the middle of the year. You know, so we do other things, how do we, you know, bring those. You know, business management type classes, the entrepreneurial education stuff into our current situations and. And develop those in our for our kids in our community so they can stay.
Um I guess I. I I hear the conversation and I by no means am hoping Anderson School no longer exists. I just, I I want, I feel like that's a consensus, I just wanna say it. Um but like the, we have needs here, right? Like we've got several people who've grown up and gone into medical. How many times do we talk about needing medical facilities? We've got people that go off and be paramedics and. Shit, I don't even know what Melinda is anymore, but she was raised here, you know, um. You know, we we have a need for the next Ben Shaw, the next Chip Morris, you know, the next um. Healy Electric, we have those needs, but but. One of the things that when I talk with my friends from out of state, it's like, yeah, but who are you gonna serve? Right? So if you're a young person with the certification in an education, but you, how do you? Justify moving to a place that has maybe two thousand people in a service area. I mean. Basic economics as a business owner, above those type of trades. That that doesn't really pan out, especially when you're talking, I gotta build a building and I gotta have a mortgage and then I gotta have a family and then I gotta have. Time to take those kids all over the state to play on. I mean, it's it's.
That's the real issue.
And I'm not, I'm trying to make it light, but then, you know, I I do believe. There are adults here, there are people that want to stay here, but they don't have like, you know, Walt works at the power plant. You need a little bit of training to get that job and a lot of people come here, they do the seasonal work, they do the three bears, they do this. And hope to get the power plant or the school district or the mine. And sometimes that doesn't happen and there's only so many times that you can sit and wait before you have to pull ship and go somewhere else. Um so I think we're all on the same page, I think we all kind of know where we're at, but. The other thing, when it says Community Resource Center, I just wanna remind everybody that all three of these schools are emergency resources. So. Regardless of what happens, there's that vested interest in making sure everything functions and making sure. These big capital projects for the good of the property itself are continuing to get done because heaven forbid. Kobe catches on fire again. We got lucky last year, but. Like that is a huge resource and we do collect revenue from that resource if I recall correctly, right? Um I do like the idea of the for the future farmers. Cause Kobe Ag, there's a whole district in our borough. That has already been designated as an agricultural asset. So if we can grab farmers, then we're doing Alaska based food and then we've got all kinds of traffic coming through the borough for good things. Um it is, it is a little discouraging, I mean, I I don't envy. The city of Anderson and like the school population for what what they're going through and same thing with Campwell a few years ago. But we can't. Can't blame those parents for making those decisions, I mean, I grew up with a in a high school that had more people than this whole borough, so. You think back to my high school experience and then wanting that for my kid that I don't have. I mean, I I it's a pretty easy decision to make as a parent in my mind and that's unfortunate, but that's that's where we are. So having these conversations. In Golden Valley language I used earlier, Plan B. I feel like as long as we're prepared for that, you know, if we're starting to utilize the space after school to try and get that foot traffic kind of trained. To come through to do X, Y, or Z, um all those things are good things.
Thank you, everybody. Great to get together.
Someone unrelated piece of news that I could share that maybe I'll remember the type of that the school board, but. Again, just kind of on that community aspect, you know. Been having some conversations with a community member, uh Callie Bass, she has a real interest in. Helping feed kids. And she and the chef that she works with in her private business, looking together and. I think has potentially be viable, standing up a new nonprofit that would really focus on providing. Meal service at no cost to the kids at the school, so. Think it's something that is. Now it has potential to work until we're looking at it. With the school board. And that would be for all three schools.
Yep. Um to piggyback off of that, uh Callie and her her chef Jake. Actually approached the Lions Club and a few of the other nonprofits that do lunch currently in Tri Valley. Just to try to make sure that they're not stepping on anybody's toes or this or that and and I think that they did get. Their nonprofit application in, like they're they're very serious about this and then they're talking about either partnering with entities or. Just in-house eating those expenses as volunteers for the first little while. Well, they stand the program up, get it tried, get it tested, get it, you know, so they could write an application for a state grant. Um it is, it is not like any of the other efforts I've seen in in recent years for school lunch. They're too very much, we wanna feed people quality ingredients, we want. You know, we wanna resource our leftovers appropriately, blah, blah, blah. So that that is very exciting and I I mean, that's one more amenity. And and again, it's no no cost for the kids, they don't wanna. Make money off of it or anything, they just wanna feed the kids regular lunches every day. And then actually their plans are ready to expand a breakfast as soon as they can, so.
And and try and then like have those conversations with the groups that are currently doing that so that. So that, you know, if this comes to be, that change is positive for everybody, that other people don't like kind of really losing opportunities. Or that ability or kind of like that place that they're currently doing some fundraising for, that does serve for the purpose for some of them. So trying to just have those conversations, so again, just. Remember, so it's kind of like as we're talking about that community use, it's being in the conversations because that's how you're able to find that, like some of the words.
And that was a young man who told me he was moving away last winter, so. Some circle closing remarks maybe or. I already talked enough about, about you guys. David, uh Mr. Hammond, Richard, you guys got any closing remarks for the group?
Uh no, but good, you know, it was good to get together. I wish I was there in person, sorry that, but uh. I don't think you wanna catch what I got. Um but yeah, it was a it was a productive meeting and it's a good thing for us to get together at least yearly.
Uh yeah, good to get together, just like uh David said. And uh just remember, support your community, support your schools and I'm back there to uh to back you up.
Very much appreciate, you know, all the work you guys do on the end to to support the schools, so thank you.
Working together to nurture and empower, inspiring today's student to positively shape tomorrow's world. I just really appreciate the uh the conversation tonight, it's really an evidence that that effort that we put into to working together. Or then ultimately working for for that, that it's like each individual child that can think of my face by name, personality. Doing all that you can to put them in the best.
Um thank you, it's it's nice to be having conversations where we have the freedom to be creative, they come up with solutions for problems that maybe haven't. Reach uh the cracks yet and um and because of the 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 smart financial position that we're all in. Right now, right, right here. And um yeah, thank you for the for the, I love the work session format and appreciate dinner too.
Yes.
Um I just really appreciative of the of the great work and relationship we have with the borough. And and just appreciate their support and participation. And the exciting work that we can do together, right, when we're on this page, trying to trying to move this community forward, it's not just about a school, it's about a community. You know, wanting people to come here, support the schools, support other businesses and. You know, it's an effort between two great organizations that that we that we get to serve with the knowledge of.
Wait, what what you get around is kind of that, um I I appreciate the open format, um being able to spare us money. Appreciate what you guys do at the borough and supporting the school, um we have a unique community here and that's why I live here. So thank you guys for what you do and, you know, and gals. You know, working together, we accomplish more than hands make light work, so.
Uh I appreciate the the comments, um you know, it's helped me. Uh see different perspectives and kind of look at things a little bit differently, it's kind of one of my takeaways that I'll take from tonight for sure. And it's it's nice to be a part of this very healthy relationship uh for sure and so. I'm happy to be a part of it and um I just, I feel fortunate that we're together in this because. There's a lot of organizations that are thankful for that.
No, just personal thanks to everybody on the school board for the work that you do. I know that a lot of the issues that you guys take on can be a lot more challenging and. Just dealing with parents and all that stuff is a little bit different than. Um the kind of budget numbers and solid waste and just writing a check once a year, um so very much, very much appreciated. And yeah, appreciate the good working relationship and getting together. Good times and bad, um just uh, yeah, just to just to check in with each other and. Um yeah, talk about some of the stuff, see the stuff coming ahead, so we're ready um when it's there, not 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 caught off guard and. Yeah, kind of stay on the same pages as 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 much as we can, so thanks for that.
I'm supposed to add on to all of this?
Um yes, thank thank you so much for hospitality and dinner and um you guys doing the assembly and um. And dipping a toe in the, like just. So much of back and forth right now with everything that's going on and. I can't express how much I appreciate coming here and and, you know, this reminder that we're. We're a community and, you know, we have a lot more shared values than we sometimes think that we do during everything, especially on social. During everything, especially on social media. Um, and just this really beautiful reminder that that we're, we are one community and whether that's. Generally borough or Alaska or bigger, um, we have. We're a lot stronger when we cut our minds together and work towards common goals and I like that and I'm happy to be part of it.
Um, I do have comments.
We all get to go again?
Amber, thank you for coordinating our Zoom tune.
Yes.
Um, all the documents, all the preparation, school board, I know you guys were tired of this budget. And your information is always valued, uh, and we do appreciate that you come to our meetings every month. I know that is another lift for you every month, but the information that you provided us help us keep. On top of everything else and then to steal your move here, sir, the Denali Borough Assembly in service of the borough citizens. Seeks to defend and sustain the spirit and the will. So if the people want schools, particularly in Anderson and Campbell. Then we will make it happen and we want to see it happen. That's all. Thanks for tuning in, guys.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll. It's your evening session.
Good day.